Supervisors for January the sec-- was sixth, January the seventh, 2025 to order. We have two members of the board participating remotely and Patricia, if I'm correct, do they have to state that they're participating remotely and where they are and why they are participating remotely? Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are.
Okay. So Supervisor Jones, could I ask you to state where you are and why you're participating remotely, please?
Is that me, Tony? I can't hear you.
Yes, that's you. Where are you and why are you participating remotely?
I'm participating remotely because I'm coming down 208. I find a very slow tractor-trailer and it's still slick out here and I'm almost to the building.
Very good. Thank you. Supervisor McCottar, can I ask you to do the same?
Yes, sir. I am in Florida on a business trip. That is why I am participating remotely.
That's a horrible place to be.
That's a horrible place to be. We feel sorry for you.
That's right. That's right. Okay. Well, the first item on the agenda under the organizational meeting is a resolution to appoint the chairman of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors for 2025. The floor is now open for nominations.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I move to nominate Mr. Dwayne Adams.
All right. We've got a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Adams. Are there further nominations? Hearing none. The nominations are closed. And I believe this has to be a roll call vote, so I'll just go around the table. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCottar?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Congratulations, Mr. Chairman. The gavel is yours.
Thank you. Well, thank you all. I appreciate your continued confidence. That's four years in a row, so hopefully we get through this year as smoothly as we've gotten through the last three. The next item is a resolution to appoint the vice chairman of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors for 2025.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Barnes.
I move to nominate Mr. Tommy Barlow.
Second.
All right. Nomination in second to appoint Mr. Barlow. Are there any other nominations?
I'll second.
All right. Seeing none, nominations are closed. Again, this needs to be a roll call vote. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. McCottar?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Barlow.
Same thing.
Sec-- is-- third is a resolution establishing the Board of Supervisors' meeting dates and time, which have been given out ahead of time in a board packet. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Been properly moved in second that we approve the meeting dates and time for 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. McCottar, did you vote?
Yes, sir, I did. Aye.
The motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution adopting the bylaws for the Board of Supervisors, which a copy has been provided ahead of time. Is there--
I'll move.
Second.
Been properly moved in second that we adopt the bylaws, the Board of Supervisors for 2025. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next will be a motion by the vice chair to go into closed session.
I move that we convene in closed session pursuant to the following subsections of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711. In accordance with Section 2.2, 3711a3, discussion or considerations of the acquisition of real property for the public purpose or of disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Two, in accordance with Section 2.2, 3711a5, discussion concerning the prospective business or industry or the expansion of an existing business or industry in the Mountain Road District where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Number three, in accordance with 2.2, 3711a8, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of legal advice by such counsel.
Do your second.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. We go into closed session. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. McCottar, we're going to kill the live feed at this point. And when we go into closed session, we'll call you directly and then bring you back on the meetings when we come back at six o'clock. The board is in closed session.
...
Mr. Chairman, move to go back into open session.
Beg.
It's been properly moved and seconded we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will now pull members to certify that the best of your knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed and considered by the Board. If any member believes that the Board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so in the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. I'd like to welcome those of you that are here in the public meeting room and those that are watching online. This is the first meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors for 2025. Welcome to this meeting. Before we move into our administrative items, we do have Mr. McCotter who is joining us remotely. And according to our bylaws, Mr. McCotter, would you tell us the reason that you're joining us remotely?
Yes, I'm out of state on a business trip.
All right, thank you, sir. We will start today's meeting as we do this evening's meeting, every meeting with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight will be by Mr. Barnes. If you care to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank you for letting us see another year, Father God. We ask you that 2025 be a good year for the Board to do decisions that take care of citizens. Father God, bless our troops that they're fighting far and near to protect them and keep them, but also bless the citizens of Louisa County. Father, we make decisions that affect their lives. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams?
We have published a revised agenda for tonight so that some people that were coming to do some presentations didn't have to travel and so that we could streamline the meeting tonight. So I move that we approve the revised agenda.
Seg.
It's been properly moved and seconded we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the minutes for the December 2nd meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the bills.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the minutes for the December 2nd meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bill.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is recognitions. We don't have any recognitions this evening. We do have our public comment period, and I think we have some cards. We do have four public hearings tonight, so if you're here to discuss anything related to a public hearing, that would be the time that you would want to do that. We do have a public comment submitted online for Mr. J.R. Stallings, which will be submitted into the record and become part of the official record of the Board. Is there any other individual that would wish to address the Board during public comment period? All right, we'll move on. Next is information and discussion items, and we do have one update there, and that's Mr. Goodwin.
Well, we haven't unmuted her yet, so.
Okay. Has Ms. Hart signified to anybody that she wanted to speak during public comment period?
She has not.
She has not.
I didn't need to ask.
Maybe her hand is up there. Mrs. Hart, I see the little emoji. I apologize. Mrs. Hart?
You've got to unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go.
Thank goodness.
Okay.
You thought you could get away.
We were hopeful we could get away. They're different.
Yeah, there is a difference. Okay, thank you, Vicki Hart, Town of Louisa, 311 Club Road. I have a question regarding, and I was not able to attend the last meeting, so you'll have to bear with me. You amended the bylaws for the County Board of Supervisors, and my question is, there's a lot in here about the behavior of residents towards any Board of Supervisor member, but there is nothing about the behavior of any Board of Supervisor member to a resident of the county. I'm just questioning why it's one way in the discussion in there, and there is nothing stated, anything about comments made by a Board of Supervisor regarding a resident. Also, that's enough. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Well, this is new, so let me see. I guess I got it. I like that. New upgrade for 2025. I like that. I figured it out. Is there any other individual that would like to address the Board during public comment period? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. Under information and discussion items, we do have an update on regional transmission projects impacting the county. And Mr. Goodwin, I believe that's you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to go back into open session.
Begging.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we go back into open session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. I will now pull members to certify that the best of your knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and is identified in the motion for which the closed meeting was convened, were discussed and considered by the Board. If any member believes that the Board varied from the purposes stated for the closed meeting, please state so and the reason prior to casting a vote. Mr. McCotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Barlow?
Yes.
Mr. Barnes?
Yes.
Mr. Woodward?
Yes.
All right, we're back into open session. I'd like to welcome those of you that are here in the public meeting room and those that are watching online. This is the first meeting of the Louisa County Board of Supervisors for 2025. Welcome to this meeting. Before we move into our administrative items, we do have Mr. McCotter who is joining us remotely. And according to our bylaws, Mr. McCotter, would you tell us the reason that you're joining us remotely?
Yes, I'm out of state on a business trip.
All right, thank you, sir. We will start today's meeting as we do this evening's meeting, every meeting with the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation tonight will be by Mr. Barnes. If you care to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Father God, I want to thank you for letting us see another year, Father God. We ask you that 2025 be a good year for the Board to do decisions that take care of citizens. Further, Father God, bless our troops, that they're fighting far and near, that you protect them and keep them, but also bless the citizens of Louisa County, Father, we make decisions that affect their lives. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our. All right, thank you. Next is the adoption of the agenda. Mr. Williams? Yes, sir.
We have published a revised agenda for tonight so that some people that were coming to do some presentations didn't have to travel and so that we could streamline the meeting tonight. So I move that we approve the revised agenda.
Begging.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the revised agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the minutes.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for the December 2nd meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the bills.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the bills. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next is the approval of the consent agenda.
So move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is recognitions. We don't have any recognitions this evening. We do have our public comment period, and I think we have some cards. We do have four public hearings tonight, so if you're here to discuss anything related to a public hearing, that would be the time that you would want to do that. We do have a public comment submitted online from Mr. J.R. Stallings, which will be submitted into the record and become part of the official record of the Board. Is there any other individual that would wish to address the Board during public comment period? All right, we'll move on. Next is information and discussion items, and we do have one update there, and that's Mr. Goodwin.
Well, we haven't unmuted her yet, so.
Okay. Has Miss Hart signified to anybody that she wanted to speak during public comment period?
She has not.
She has not.
I didn't need to ask.
Maybe her hand is up there. Mrs. Hart, yeah, I see the little emoji. I apologize. Mrs. Hart?
You got to unmute yourself. There you go.
There we go.
Thank goodness.
Okay.
You thought you could get away.
We were hopeful we could get away. They're different.
Yeah, there is a difference. Okay, thank you, Vicki Hart, Town of Louisa, 311 Club Road. I have a question regarding, and I was not able to attend the last meeting, so you'll have to bear with me. You amended the bylaws for the county Board of Supervisors, and my question is, there's a lot in here about the behavior of residents towards any Board of Supervisor member, but there is nothing about the behavior of any Board of Supervisor member to a resident of the county. I'm just questioning why it's one way in the discussion in there, and there is nothing stated, anything about comments made by a Board of Supervisor regarding a resident. Also, that's enough. That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Well, this is new, so let me see. I guess I got it. I like that, new upgrade for 2025. I like that. I figured it out. Is there any other individual that would like to address the Board during public comment period? All right, seeing none, we'll move on then. Under information and discussion items, we do have an update on regional transmission projects impacting the county. And Mr. Goodwin, I believe that's you.
Sure thing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Just a brief update for you this evening. I would draw your attention to packet page 93, if you have a moment to turn to that. There is an entity called the PJM that oversees the provisioning of electrical services in the region that includes Virginia, and that's several states as well as Virginia, and they go through an open window process for transmission projects. And essentially, what they do during that process is ensure that demands are met by available transmission infrastructure and available generation infrastructure. So the county doesn't have a formal role in this process, and PJM's role is basically, it's high level right now. You know, they're essentially saying what we all generally know, and that is, there is a great draw for power along the north and eastern parts of Virginia with data center development in Northern Virginia, continued electrification of vehicles. There is available power to transmit to those needs in the future, and we're talking about a multi-year window in kind of the south and west, and those are very generally speaking. But they have, over the past several months, been looking through ideas for moving power up to the areas that need the power. And one of those potential solutions for transmitting power may impact the county, and that is in the graphic that's included on page 93. It appears, when you look at it, if you look at the map, you're going to say, well, they don't have labels on here for county boundaries, they don't have interstates, the places labeled on the map just use substation names, so it's a little difficult to tell exactly where things are, and that's because this is still very much at a high-level planning stage. It hasn't gone to the SEC or anything like that. But they are the entity that looks at projects and potential projects that would meet needs and then sends those projects to the SEC going forward. So what they are focused on in this region this year is the development of 765 kilovolt lines, which are bigger than the current lines that are in the county. And the rough route of that line would parallel the existing 500 KV line that kind of runs roughly up the eastern side of the county from Vontae up towards the power plant. So if that project were approved and it moved forward, it could follow a route that may parallel that, could change, but given the fact that there's already a line there, it could parallel that and involve some additional acreage along the side of that, or some additional footage along the side of that existing route. The timeline for the process, their Board will meet and decide on final recommendations later in the first quarter of this year. It would then go to the SEC likely in 2026. Construction on anything that the SEC approved would take place probably in the early 2030s. But I just want to bring your attention to this right now. We don't have a formal role at this point. Again, it's very high-level, very planning-oriented, but it could impact the county, and that is a potential direct impact that it could have to the county. So I welcome any questions that you may have. I'm not smart, and this is not my area of expertise. I'm just trying to stay on top of this so that I can keep you all and anyone else apprised, and I'm happy to get information on anything that you need to know that I cannot answer directly.
Anybody have any comments?
I do. I mean, looking at the very generalized, very generalized map that they've given out, I have some concerns about these transmission lines coming across.
Sure.
I have some really serious concerns about, sorry about that. I have some really serious concerns about it crossing the historic Green Springs.
What's wrong with the county, ma'am?
Area. Hmm?
What's wrong with the county? It's the eastern end.
Is it the eastern end of the county?
Yeah, Vontae's in Hanover.
Okay, so this won't be coming through historic Green Springs?
It doesn't look that way, but I will tell you, I spent two and a half hours on one of their committee calls.
And our farmland, yeah.
Yeah. What they had provided to me in advance of today's meeting looked like it was going to stay in the eastern side of the county, and I think that is going to, again, this is.
Today, they provided this to you?
This is where we are right now. I mean, it hasn't been finalized yet, but I'm very interested in exactly where it's going to be as well. And if you ask PJM these kinds of detailed questions that both you and I and anyone else would have, they will say, we're not in the business of telling you where lines are going to be located. That is up to the entity building the line and you all as a local government at that point, if the SEC approves the project. So I would share your concerns, just like everyone else does. They will tell you, we are just engineers looking to supply power needs with power generation.
Yeah, I understand that. I just, I hope it stays on the eastern end and doesn't cross and come through historic lands.
Understood.
And even, and I know Tony just looked at me when I said that, but you know, farmland too, you know, we have, we need to protect what we have here.
Well, the other thing you need to understand.
No daggers, Tony.
The other thing you need to understand is that I think this actually abuts the piece that I live on. And when they built the power plants, they built one and two, they started building three. And most of the 500 KV lines that you see running around here, there's enough easement for two 500 KV lines, because there were supposed to be reactors, three and four, and they're never built. So most of the high voltage lines that you see, 500 KV's, most of those easements are probably is large enough for two, it's just only got developed for one.
They've talked about that a little bit, and I think the way they characterize potential additional space needs is variable, because in some areas it's wide enough, in some areas they would need additional. But I think if entities were to move forward without development, their preference would be to parallel or stay within that existing easement, as you said, Mr. Williams.
But exactly, what role will the county have as we move through this process? I mean, I know it's a 2030, 2030 to 2035.
Here it comes.
But.
A couple. I mean, anyone who wants to tune in at this point to PJM's efforts can do so, and I mean, the type of input that we're talking about now, they typically, I don't want to say they squelch it, because they don't, they welcome it, but their response is always, we don't talk down at that level yet.
No, but when we get to that level.
So the next step will be the SEC. Obviously, there will be ample public comment and county comment opportunities at the SEC level, and then if the SEC does decide to approve a project, then the county, as I understand it, will have a seat at the table with the constructing entity to decide on exact footprints and routes and things like that. So multi-year process, more potential for involvement going forward.
Well, as Mr. Williams said, and what my hope is, and you and I have talked about this in the past, is the least disruptive route for any of these lines, and I'm sure they're going to be built as, obviously, their need for electricity continues to grow, is to either use existing easements or parallel the existing easements, because those are already in place. So, all right, anything else? Thank you, sir. Under unfinished business, we don't have anything on the agenda. I got a couple of things I wanted to add.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. McCotter has a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, sir.
Okay, real quick, the way I looked at that map, we were going to be using existing easements, like Supervisor Williams noted, as well as you did, Chairman. How, my question is probably what most constituents are wondering, how do they, how are they made aware, or how can they make themselves aware of this process, of when these decisions will be made, how they can participate in it? Are we just going to wait and see, and then we'll disseminate that information to them? Or is there a way that staff can find out how constituents can be made aware?
Yeah, they can certainly follow along with PJM's process. That information is publicly available, that committee's meetings, and I will put some information together, and we can share that so that people are able to follow along themselves as well. It's a great point, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. McCotter, you may have to call out as well, because the little icon when you raise your hand is extremely small, so I apologize, I didn't see that. Under unfinished business, we actually don't have anything, but a couple of things I do want to mention. Obviously, this meeting was moved from yesterday to today due to the weather. We have tried to accommodate people with our public hearings today. We have three different options for people to weigh in on public hearings, whether they're in person, whether they want to submit something in writing, or we do have an option for a Teams meeting or a Zoom. We'll go through that when we get to the public hearing so that people can participate. And we've taken all that into consideration to try to make tonight's meeting as accessible as possible. I'd also like to give a shout out to the county staff, Mr. Goodwin and his staff, to Mr. Wolfok and his staff in General Services for getting the facilities ready and the facilities open. I know they were getting the polls open today, it was Election Day. And I also wanted to follow up on something that I asked staff to look into at the last meeting, and it would be appropriate to talk about it or mention it now. That is, there's been a question about emergency weather shelters by churches and things in the county, and we do know that there's a zoning issue, and staff is looking at the zoning issue. And I just wanted to be clear that my intent, I'm speaking for myself, my intent was that we find a way that we can work with existing religious organizations, that if there's a need for temporary housing, emergency shelters, especially an event like we just had, that we can work through to find a way to get everybody in compliance. And I think, I received some phone calls, and I think some people were confused about what the intent there. I personally think that's probably one of the callings of the church, is to provide shelter for people when they're there. So as we work through that process, I just wanted to make sure that my intentions were clear. We'll go to reports of officers, boards, and standing committees. I don't know that we have any committee reports. Do we have any committee reports this evening? Yes, sir.
I just, it's not really a committee report, but I had, I attended the graduation of 11 EMT graduates held at Lake Island Rescue, and the class was taught by Jen Ford and whoever she had assisting her. Anyway, it just shows that there's an awful lot of time involved with these, most of them were young kids, but there were some from other counties taking the EMT training, and they've got over 205 hours of class time in that, and that doesn't include clinical time or their study time or travel time, any of that stuff. So to think that somebody is volunteering 205 hours apiece for these 11 graduates, I think is pretty dang on commendable. And, you know, I'm in discussion with Jen Ford, and I would maybe like to get them to come to one of our meetings so we can express that appreciation in a resolution form or something like that. We haven't worked that out yet, but it just is amazing the amount of time that they're putting forth into these things. And I suspect a lot of these young people will end up being career staff for Louisa at some point. So it's, there's an awful lot of time being put in that I wasn't aware of.
I'm glad you could attend. I was supposed to attend, I had whatever was going around that night, and I had to not attend, so I'm glad you were there. Yes, ma'am.
I'd just like to follow up with that. I had the opportunity on the flip side, some of those young people who, maybe not directly in that class, but other classes, have flipped to the professional side, and I had the pleasure of attending our graduation on the professional staff side right before Christmas. And that was, we had promotions that day, and we had, was it 18 graduates, Mr. Goodwin?
Yes.
Yeah, 18 graduates, and both Mr. Goodwin and I got to speak at the event, at the graduation. And a lot of them were young people that have made that step, so it's exciting that there's, the pipeline is there for that. And I was just speaking this weekend to another young lady who's got to graduate from Louisa, and she wants to go into that career path, and she's taking classes now and would like to come to Louisa one day. So I think that's pretty awesome. I also just have something, very quickly, for the committee. It has to do with the Chamber. The Chamber, just a brief update on the Chamber and their meetings. They have some events coming up on January 21st, they have Leadership Louisa. On the 22nd, they have a business forum coming up, and all of this is posted on their website. They also have some ribbon cuttings, and they have a very active January ahead, the Chamber of Commerce. So they are busy working for our businesses in our community.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, would like to give y'all a recap of the Commission on Aging's Christmas function, or dinner, luncheon. Just under 200 folks attended. Certainly appreciate Supervisor Jones, Supervisor Barlow, and a really special thank you and appreciation to Supervisor Barnes for providing such a great meal for us. And I think everybody had a good time. It was my first one to attend, and I was very impressed. It was a really nice turnout and a nice event, so.
With a live band.
There was a live band who was awesome, yes. Yeah.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to board appointments. Mr. Williams?
Mr. Chairman, I think I have two tonight. My guy on the Water Authority, David Keys, I'd like to reappoint him. I think he expired into November. And evidently, we have an opening on the Board of Building Appeals. I'd like to point Jeff Luck to that.
Okay. Any other appointments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Also, one reappointment and one new appointment. Water Authority, I'd like to reappoint Bob Hardy, who I think everybody sitting here certainly knows, and would like to appoint Susan Fletcher to the Commission on Aging as a Louisa District Representative.
Okay.
Is that a new appointment for her? For Susan aging? Yeah. She'll do good there. That's good, yeah.
Any other appointments? All right, can I have one motion for all those?
It is one motion. One second.
Have a second.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we make these four appointments. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, Mr. County Administrator.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman and members of the Board, just a few items to briefly bring to your attention. First, I want to echo the chairman's appreciation of the staff over the last 48, 72 hours, whenever we started counting. It was, the weather event always is a different set of challenges for us, and I'm always super proud of how our team responds. So law enforcement, dispatch, fire and emergency services, all the folks who never stopped, General Services, Parks and Rec staff who worked around the clock and got us here today. They really do great work. We are going to open at 10:30 tomorrow, just a little last melting for the parking lots and the sidewalks outside, just to make sure it's safe for the public to get into the buildings. And we're watching another potential weather system for the weekend, so we'll keep you posted on that, and everybody be safe out there. The county's been operating the airport now for a few months. We had talked about an airport advisory board. I'd encourage the Board to be thinking about that. We have some structuring recommendations for the Board to consider, so please be on the lookout for those coming up soon. And last but certainly not least, we continue to be negotiating with the Central Virginian about moving publications back to the local paper. They are switching to a different system for taking online advertisements, starting on the 9th of January. So assuming that goes well, we haven't talked to them in the last week or so, but assuming that goes well, we would start publications for the February 3rd Board of Supervisors meeting and the February 13th Planning Commission meeting. So the advertisements for the 3rd Board of Supervisors meeting would be on Thursday the 16th of January and Thursday the 23rd of January for public hearings. And for the Planning Commission, would start January the 30th and February the 6th for that February 13th meeting. I know that's a slew of dates, but essentially, that means that assuming their systems switch went well, and that takes place on the 9th of January, we will start in January, moving our advertisements back to the CV, and I'm excited about that.
Thank you.
That'd be a great thing.
Yes, thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Goodwin? All right, thank you, sir. All right, we'll move on to public hearings. We do have four public hearings this evening. The first is an ordinance to approve proposed amendments to Chapter 86 Land Development Regulations, Article 1, General Provisions, Article 2, Zoning Ordinances and Maps, Articles 3, Subdivision, Article 4, Supplementary Regulations, and Article 5, Signs, Phase 1, Ordinance 2024-11. Mrs. Buckler?
Good evening, Chairman Adams and members of the Board, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Happy New Year.
I hope everyone has a great holiday. The first public hearing we have this evening are for proposed amendments to Chapter 86 Land Development.
Regulations includes Article 1, General Provisions, Article 2, Zoning Ordinances and Maps, Article 3, Subdivision, Article 4, Supplementary Regulations, and Article 5, Signs. The proposed amendments are intended to address discrepancy, clarify regulations, ensure alignment with more stringent federal and state regulations, update standards to reflect current practices, and make adjustments based on the community needs and the 2040 comprehensive plan. They are also intended to improve efficiency of the ordinances by removing conflicts and outdated provisions, and the full draft of the amendments are on pages 2000. and outdated provisions, and the full draft of the amendments are in pages 2016 through 226 in your board packet. Just quickly, I'm going to briefly go through these. Under 8613 definitions, we have amended bed and breakfast to increase stays from five nights to seven nights. Under building setback line, added language, the lot also has to meet the minimum lot width requirement. We've added a new definition for food truck. We have removed food truck from the itinerant vendor definition. Under minimum lot area, we have amended that to clarify that the lot area is exclusive of any rights-of-way areas or easements. Lot width, we've added clarification that if the lot width is not met at the building setback, that the front setback becomes the point on the lot where the lot width is met. Under special advertising signs, we've included coming soon signs, which are at a nine-square-foot limit for 14 days, but no permit is required. Under temporary sign, we have also added coming soon signs, increased the length of time to 90 days, and a sign permit is required. Section 8644, we've removed the requirement for conditional use permit for any sewer system designed to contain a point source discharge, as this is regulated by the state and federal provisions. We have relocated Section 86104 Growth Area Overlay Districts to be near the Growth Area Overlay standards. Right now, they're currently in two sec, different sections of the ordinance, so they're not beside each other, so it makes it difficult in explaining and, and directing people to those regulations. There are amendments to 86109, the Use Matrix, which will be amended to reflect changes that are being proposed with these amendments, which is the inclusion of food truck as a separate use, which would be allowed in all of the zoning districts by right, except the residential zoning districts. We've also removed the word residential from in front of accessory structures in the setbacks for the agricultural zoning district, which is consistent with the other zoning district language. None of the other zoning districts include the word residential in front of accessory Under Article 3, Subdivisions, we have included provisions that require third-party review, inspection, and certification of road plans within subdivisions, and that would be for both new public and private road subdivisions. And the developer would be responsible for any costs associated with that third-party review, inspection, and certification. And we've also included language from the Code of Virginia regarding the dedication of right-of-way and the county's obligation for installation and maintenance of improvements. Sections 86570 and 571 have been amended to provide for county notification to adjoining or affected property owners for any development proposing to utilize a sewage system designed to have a point source discharge. They do receive notification from DEQ, but this is an additional notification that the county would provide to adjoining or affected property owners. For, in subdivisions, 86614 Final Plats, we've included a provision that the final subdivision plat must show whether a lot is being served by a conventional or alternative drain field system. And Sections 86626, 627, 628, and 637, for site plan reviews, we've added clarification that the transmit, middle of those plans to state agencies is for review and comment only. We've updated the Erosion and Sediment Control Plan Approval Authority as the county ENS Administrator, and it provides, again, for notification to adjoining or affected property owners for development proposing a point source discharge. And then, under Article 5, Signs, we increased the maximum size of the temporary sign allowed in the commercial, industrial, resort development, and planned unit development districts from 16 square feet to 32 square feet. And as I indicated previously, the length of time that a temporary sign may be in place has been adjusted in the definitions. And that are all of the proposed amendments under what we are calling Phase 1. There will be more forthcoming.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Buckler? Yes, sir.
What's included in Phase 2? A lot?
Not, about the same.
Okay. As you're considering Phase 2, it's not germane to Phase 1 today, there's a electronic sign that just got put up in the district, and quite frankly, we don't have any, except, anything except for existing stores. There's no commercial and business land or anything. And the electronic sign, when it has certain tones and colors on it, can be seen from about three-quarters of a mile away. And it seems to me that in some of these outlying ag districts, and maybe we want to be considerate of that, and maybe think about that as, as we move forward. These, these electronic signs have a, a blare to them, and that's, that's the best word I can come up with. That's not a word, I don't think, but it's a, it, it blasts that light out there, and it just, it permeates, especially when they, they put a bunch of whites in it. It just, it's, it's a glow.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to back Tony, because that, that, we do have two signs that are very blinding in the Greensprings District. One is, two, but two of them are churches in agricultural areas. Is this, is yours a church?
Yeah.
I got another example that's a church.
Yeah, and, and it's in agricultural area, and it's just, you can see it for miles, and it is blinding, and one is on 15, and it's blinding to drivers. They've, not using that one as much anymore, but it was rough. The other one is Zion, over in Zion, so.
I'm sorry, that's not germane to what we're talking about, and.
We need to do something, though, with it.
If it puts it on our radar, we will certainly look into those requirements.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Buckler, my understanding is, the section of this that was changed concerning developers having to provide the road studies on their property, including ingress and egress, that's because of VDOT's change in their policy mainly, where they have gone away from that. I guess they legislated that out some time ago, and so for us to have that done, it needs to come from the developer, engineer versus VDOT.
I'm going to let Mr. Kuhn address that.
The language has been amended that we won't need to get VDOT's approval to move forward with our process. So we'll still send it to VDOT for review and comment. However, we don't need VDOT approval, because it has been told to us by VDOT that they will not approve these plans anymore. So because it was at odds, we couldn't move forward, VDOT wasn't going to change, we just needed to make those updates in the code to reflect that, and approval isn't required for us to move forward.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Ms. Wade.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kuhn, I assume since they won't be approving it, then they won't be disapproving them either?
Correct.
Is that, is that implied?
We will send it to them for review and comment.
This review and comment has nothing to do with whether they like it or not.
It'll be.
Very good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anyone else?
Just one comment. On this, London and I had a long discussion on these phases this afternoon. I'd gotten confused about them. But what they're, this first phase is to try and make some clarifications and to resolve issues that the planning department has been having, just in the way definitions are not coinciding with one another and that type of thing. The other, second and third phase will go a little bit deeper into things. But this first phase, I had, I had suggested to them, actually even before Mr. Furrow did the last rewrite, to pick things that they were having issues with, try to correct those, rather than going through, and end up creating more problems than you fix. So this first phase, I think is initially to try and resolve some of the issues that planning staff is having with conflicts and definitions, and the way it's written in different parts of the ordinance. So the other phases may be getting a little more in-depth, but this first phase is just to clarify and clean up some of the problems that have been happening.
That's correct. The, the first phase started out as the clarification and everything, just like Mr. Barlow indicated, and as we started with what we're calling Phase 1, we found additional items that, that we needed to do another amendment, set of amendments for, and then we've had some phone calls with questions about certain amendments or certain regulations that we are looking at as well, that we'll provide more information as we get through those.
Anyone else? I would like to add two, I'm going to stick on the sign issue for a minute. And Mr. Barto's exactly right, and we've had the same discussion where staff is cleaning up some of the ordinances. But I do know that the commercial sign, size, and date, I want to thank you for addressing that. That came up out of a discussion with groundbreaking in the mineral district in January, December, no, we're in, no, in, in, in late November, November, that we found out that a business could only put a sign up that was three-by-three, and they couldn't leave it up. So I appreciate you addressing that in, in this current update. So staff got on that, and I think that's a reasonable solution. And I really don't want to be the guy that, that piles on churches here, but, you know, we had an issue several years ago with a church on 522 that put up illuminated sign, permanent sign, and they used red and blue, which looked exactly at night like either a fire truck, an ambulance, or a police car, and it was blinding, literally blinding. And I worked with them, they made some changes to that. But my question is, when, as we move into Phase 2 or 3, whenever we start to look at that, in our ordinance on dark sky lighting, which addresses the lights on the building, the parking lot lights, that sort of thing, is there a way that we can see if these mechanical signs have to be limited as a number of lumens, or whatever it would be, that it, it doesn't have, because it sounds like it's a county-wide issue?
Right. We can certainly research that and bring some options forward as it moves through the Planning Commission for discussion, and we can forward any information that we find to you all as well in advance of that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, unless there are any other questions, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here in the public that would wish to speak on these proposed amendments to the land use ordinances? Let's see, I don't see Mrs. Hart. Mrs. Hart?
She has her hand up.
I know to look.
No, look at that. Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Nikki Hart, Louisa District. My only question is, in the Phase 2, because I did not see it in this current write-up, are we going to be looking at the safety of portable dwelling units, for lack of a better term, that are supplied by extension cords from built residential homes? Is that going to be in there? Because it, what worries me is the fire attribute.
What, what exactly is your question?
I'm not quite sure.
What?
These, these houses in Louisa that are using their yards for people to move their portable trailers into, or they're in their cars or whatever, and they run extension cords from the trailer, for lack of a better word, or car to the house, and, and they live there. So they, are we going to be addressing that as far as fire code or anything, because these electrical lines are just run across the ground?
You're talking about people living in campers and that sort of thing?
Right. Yes.
Not in this party ordinance?
That, that's already out of compliance. If you know something that's happening like that, I'd suggest you contact Community Development. That would be against code, anyway.
Well, it's obvious, because it's all the way up and down Louisa Road and all the other highways. I shouldn't have to notify anybody, it's been there forever. My only concern is, like I said, the fire aspect.
Well, if you're that concerned, I think you would notify Community Development, were a complaint-based response.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
So there is not going to be anything in the, in the report concerning whether this is allowed or not allowed?
Well, okay, thank, do you want to address that, or do you want me to address that? Thank you. In Phase 1, that's not being addressed. That can be looked at in Phase 2, if you'll make a note of that. But as I mentioned to you previously, there's already an ordinance on the books in Louisa County that prohibits permanent occupation of a camper, or an RV, or something like that, so. If you see, if you see that and have a complaint, and part of the reason for that is, fire hazard, safety hazard, they're not up to code for full-time habitation. That answer your question?
Yeah.
I'm going to assume it did.
Yeah, sorry.
All right. Anyone else wish to speak? All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, come back to the board.
A move approved.
Been properly moved in second, that we approve this ordinance proposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
I think it was for the first.
It was. It's delayed.
What is it?
Because I came in.
Yeah, I watch, yeah, it delays about three or four seconds. Next is a resolution to approve a rezoning application, REZ 2024-07, LA Resort LLC, applicant's owner proffer amendment request. Mrs. Buckler?
Good evening again. This public hearing is a request by Lake Anna Resort LLC to amend the proffers of rezoning 2022-05 with the goal of increasing the total density of the planned unit development condominium portion of the project from a maximum of 96 units to a new maximum total of 124 units. The applicant is requesting the 28 additional units to allow for a mix of unit sizes that support the development's economic feasibility. The proposed 124 units does not exceed the 10 dwelling units per acre density calculation outlined in the Louisa County Land Development Regulations, and according to the applicant, the size of the building will not increase. The applicant has submitted an addendum to the 2022 proffers, which I believe has been handed out to the board, and they are proffering, I will just try to quickly summarize it, $500 for each additional unit above 96 within 15 days of approval to the foundation of Lake Anna Emergency Services, an additional $500 per unit above 96 to the foundation for the Flavana and Louisa Housing Foundation within 15 days of approval, if so approved. And then again, another $500 to the foundation of Lake Anna Emergency Services for each unit above 96 within 60 days of the issuance of the first residential unit occupancy permit, and again, another $500 to the Flavana and Louisa Housing Foundation to be paid within 60 days of the issuance of the first residential occupancy permit for any unit above 96 that is approved. I will try to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
Does anybody have any questions of Mrs. Buckler? Any applicant is here?
Yes, sir.
Have the applicant.
Good evening, Chair Adams, and the Board of Supervisors, and happy new year. My name is Mike Grossman. I am the manager of the applicant, LA Resort LLC. As staff has indicated, our PUD residential condominium density is limited to 96 dwelling units. This request before you tonight is to allow us to increase the number of units from 96 to 124 units. The purpose of this request is to support a unit mix that will provide the highest degree of likely success for market absorption, while still capturing the necessary sellable unit floor area needed to support the development's economic feasibility. And what that basically means is, we need to sell a certain type of unit that meets the market demand, and sell- the market demand, and sell enough of them, or enough total unit square footage to defray the costs of land improvements, utility, infrastructure, and amenities, which are basically fixed and still provide the level of quality we aim to achieve. Can I switch to the next slide? It's right here. Is it the right button? Right one, oh, the right. Thank you. This exhibit is an excerpt from our approved site plan, which shows the condominium building's footprint, massing its orientation overall length. It also shows our parking areas. We have 236 residential parking spaces highlighted in the pink shaded area, which supports 118 residential condominium units per the code. We also have a restaurant parking area with 53 spaces, of which 41 spaces are required per the code. This leaves an additional 12 restaurant parking spaces that we would like to repurpose for residential use. They are shown and highlighted in green near the condominium building. If we take the 236 residential parking spaces and add 12 for the repurposed restaurant spaces, we come up with 248 spaces in total. This would support 124 residential units per the code, add two spaces per unit. This next slide has the same footprint as the previous exhibit showing the approved site plan excerpt, but with an added unit layout scheme that includes 96 units, including two-bedroom, three-bedroom, four-bedroom, and five-bedroom units. Two of these vertical, two of these vertical stacks are five-bedroom units, shown in pink. Each five-bedroom stack has six units, so in total, there are 12 five-bedroom units. However, our market research indicates that five-bedroom units are unlikely to sell at the required price point and absorption rate. Our research also indicates that one-bedroom units are needed to support a market segment price point, and currently, we do not have any one-bedroom units in our program. We are proposing to swap out the two stacks of five-bedroom units with six stacks of one-bedroom units, and clean up the irregular shape in the middle of the segment, of the middle segment, by adding four one-bedroom units. This would bring the total unit count from 96 units to 124 units. None of these changes or modifications I am proposing would change the building size, so we would still be able to maintain the same sellable unit square footage we need to support the development's economic feasibility. Here is an excerpt of the exact same building footprint, but with 124 units. The 12 five-bedroom units have been deleted and replaced with 40 one-bedroom units highlighted in light blue, resulting in a net increase of 28 units, for a total of 124 units. Again, nothing has changed in the building's size or orientation with this modification compared to the approved site plan, or the 96-unit footprint version shown in the previous slide. Essentially, what this request boils down to is that we are asking for an increase in 28 kitchens, one for each increase in unit count. And interestingly, if we went ahead with this particular layout scheme as shown, the overall bedroom and bathroom count for the building would decrease by 24 units. I don't know if I'm out of time.
Let me ask you a question.
Yes, sir.
You just said that the bedroom and bathroom count would decrease by 20, you said 24 units. I think you mean 24 spaces, right?
Exactly, I'm sorry, I meant by 24 together, so 24 bedrooms and 24 bathrooms, it would decrease.
Okay.
Not 24.
Not units.
Thank you for that clarification. If it pleases the board, and I have a few more minutes, I'd like to address some of the potential impacts we have identified with an increase in units. For schools, all of our conversations with prospective unit purchasers, local real estate agents, and our market study team indicate that the purchasers of our units will fall under one of three major categories. The first category is active adults who will use the unit as their primary residence. This group is defined as those over the age of 55, and who seek an active lifestyle. The second group is second home purchasers. This group will purchase a unit for personal use, friends and family, and not, and are not interested in renting the unit when not occupied. And the third group is vacation home purchasers. This group will purchase the unit for personal use and rent the unit when not personally occupying it. Can I guarantee that no unit purchaser will use the unit as a primary residence and have school-aged children? No, I cannot. However, no research or conversations with industry experts indicate this will be the reality. Regarding traffic, traffic impacts are expected to be marginal due to the increased number of units from 96 to 124. Per the VDOT Trip Generation Manual 10th Edition calculation, there is expected to be just an additional 200 trips per day by increasing the unit count by 28 units. This is little over seven trips per unit per day. That being said, I think a case can be made that the trip count could actually go down with additional units. Swapping out the 12 five-bedroom units and replacing them with 36 one-bedroom units would result in 24 fewer bedrooms, as I mentioned previously. Regardless, we contend that any traffic impact from the approval of this request would be marginal. Fire and EMS, regarding impacts to fire and EMS due to the increase in the number of units, set aside the idea that, for a moment, that the number of total bedrooms may actually go down, which means less people in the units. I would agree that there are, or may be, a small impact on fire and EMS services, and because of this, we would be, we would like to proffer additional monetary contributions. Mrs. Buckler went over and reviewed them, but I'd be more than happy to talk about those as well. And again, speaking about the proffers, I'd like to take a moment and talk about affordable housing and workforce housing. Like so many communities, we have heard from Louisa community leaders, that providing this type of housing is a major dilemma, and although our project does not support this type of housing, we are part of the Louisa community, and we'd like to help find a solution. And to that end, we would like to provide the same voluntary monetary contribution we are offering to the foundation of Lake Anna Emergency Services to the Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation. Lastly, revenue impact. I would contend that, all things being equal, an increase in the number of residential units would mean additional tax, real estate tax revenue. And I think, I think that's, that's, of course, if everything's equal. I'd be more than happy to answer any of your questions, and I thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I am, I'm not sure I'm gonna use this word, I'm appalled at the lack of you standing here, asking for a 29.1% increase in a voluntary proffer that you were supposed to have between 72 and 96 dwelling units. You went to 96, and you want another 29% more. And you come here and make claims like, we go from 12 units to 40 units, and the traffic count is going to go down. You want to be selling 28 additional units for the sum of maybe $28 million, and you want to offer paltry $56,000 in proffers. I don't know where you think that we're a bunch of dumb country bumpkins that just got off here. I would much rather you say, we would like to maximize the profits, we'd like to put more money in our pockets, and that's why we need additional 28 units. Do not come here and appease us with these paltry and insulting comments that you have made here tonight, and I'm sorry, that's where I am.
You have anything? You did mention, Mr. Grossman, something about rentals. If I remember correctly, in your original C, PUD, it's proffered out on short-term rentals, correct? They cannot be rented for less than seven days, which the average short-term rental around Lake Anna is seven days or less. So that doesn't change. So when you mentioned something about rentals, I assume you were talking, somebody would buy it and rent it on a long-term basis. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. All right. If no one else has any questions for...
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps you could ask Mr. Grossman for me, Mr. Chairman. While the two are not connected, I'm curious if he should get something, if we approve this request hypothetically, when would, when would the project be started? Can we have a general timeline on that? We've had a considerable amount of taxpayer dollars spent on acquiring a wastewater treatment plant, and I think part of, part of that, well, it's not contingent on that, we're planning on purchasing that, doing what we can, aid development with that purchase, but I think there was an expectation that there would be a resort project connected to that wastewater treatment plant.
That's a question.
I don't, did you ask a question, Ms. McCott, or because if so, we missed it?
When's you gonna start?
When's the construction starting? Is that the question?
It is, yes.
Okay.
So today, we don't have an exact construction start date. We are working with county staff in regards to the wastewater treatment plant coming online. They are in the design phase, and we're supposed to have an update end of January, early February. That is one of the long poles in the tent, to have a better understanding when we, when we have assurances that that treatment facility will be operational. In terms of other factors that impact when we would start, we would have to have a certain amount of pre-sales before we start construction, and ideally, we would, we would start those pre-sales in the spring, in the spring months, to give us the best opportunity to capture, to capture those sales. So our hope was to start pre-sales this, this spring, but one of the long poles in the tent was the wastewater treatment plant, so I think that may get pushed until next spring at this, at this time. That's, that's the idea, and our idea is, once we start pre-sales, we will, we will start construction six months after that. So Q3 of 2025, or 2026 is construction start.
You want to add?
Thank you.
Only on the proposed condo unit, or is that on the hotel as well?
Currently, we're working on the proposed condominium building. We are hopefully having conversations with prospective hotel developers that are interested in building a hotel concurrently with, with our, with our condominium building. We are in conversations with the, our selected general contractor to be able to accommodate that, and we are planning for that eventuality where we can build the hotel during the construction of the residential condominium. That would create the greatest amount of efficiencies for us to be able to do that at one time.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Mr.?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, sorry.
So you are asking for almost a 30% increase on units, is that correct, Mr.?
Grossman.
Grossman.
That would, rough math, in my mind, in my head, yes, that would be almost a 30% increase. But again, the building itself is not changing, the site plan is not gonna, we are not gonna have to go through a site plan amendment, we're just switching out larger 3,200 square-foot units for smaller units, and essentially, we're asking for additional kitchens. The building itself is not changing at all. So 3,200 square-foot units, five-bedroom units are gonna turn into three one-bedroom units, or 1,000 square-foot units. But the building itself is, is, is not gonna change.
What's your estimate, assuming what, what it is right now, of how much, because on your slide, there was something about real estate taxes. What's your estimate of how much real estate value is in that building, from a tax basis for the county?
I would estimate, assessment-wise, probably over $100 million.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
I think, when I hear that question, what is the assessment difference between a five-bedroom apartment condo as opposed to reduction to a one-bedroom apartment? And in other words, what's the differentiation between what you currently have and what you're proposing from a tax standpoint?
Sure. The increase, I'm not sure how significant it would be, I didn't run any, any calculations, but if we're, if we're changing out a 3,200 square-foot, five-bedroom unit, and we're creating three one-bedroom, 1,000 square-foot plus one-bedroom units, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take, take a, take a leap of faith and say that those three one-bedroom units collectively will have a higher tax base than the, than one five-bedroom unit. You know, how much, I, it would be a speculation on my part, maybe $600,000 collectively for three, three one-bedrooms over, over a five-bedroom unit.
More?
More, yes, yes, sir. I would say three, three to 600,000.
Anybody, anybody else have anything? All right, thank you, Mr. Grossman. We'll open the public comment period. I do have these. We have one, two. So we have an email that was submitted that will be by Mike and Valerie Bagby, which actually addresses both public hearings we have tonight on this one, but does specifically address Lake Anna Resort. Their email will be entered into the public record of the board meeting, and then we have one from Chris Unruh, that's from outside of Louisa, and their comments will be entered into the public record for this meeting as well. Do we have any cards?
We do.
Phil Winston, I see Phil right there.
My name is Phil Winston, I'm a resident of Louisa County and reside in the mineral district. Mr. Williams, just want to remind, as you spoke and mentioned to the rest of the board, the applicant originally asked for 72 units. At the night that this board approved, they also then turned around and approved another two stories, or another 24 units, approved it to 96 units. Now the applicant's back, looking for 120 units. So before construction starts, when's he coming back asking for more? When does a hotel become a condominium? The hotel that we all wanted, when does that become another condominium unit? So my, my original talk tonight was to talk about the road, the road. I'm only concerned about one road, is Route 208 from Dickerson Store to the 208 Bridge. I bought my piece of property in 1999, and commercial buildings on that road in 1999 consisted of two gas stations and Lake Anna Family Campground, period. That was it. There wasn't another commercial building on that three and a half miles of that road. Since that time, now, today, we're looking at 28 new townhomes in the plaza, we're looking at more density at the Lake Anna Resort. There's a new shopping area going in between the, just, I'm sorry, just, just east of the firehouse, that is a strip center. There'd be 130-room hotel, plus a restaurant at the resort. There's 891 units going on, a cut-along, plus the additional recreation area, plus the golf course. Construction traffic for AWS going on Kentucky Springs Road. And so far, what has taken place is we've had a foot added to the side of the road, about two inches of asphalt put on top of it, and a few turning lanes. This is unacceptable. You know, with every, every other commercial piece of property that we've now approved sitting on that road, you, you, you cannot handle that traffic. Oh, we asked for a speed limit to be dropped from 55 miles an hour, I don't know how it ever got there, anyway, they dropped it to 50, all right? So we, we need to do something, because if not, you're gonna see a lot more deaths on that road. You know, maybe I'm a little prejudiced...
15 seconds.
Because I can't get out of my driveway on a weekend in particular. Add a couple thousand more units on that road, a couple thousand, and these are ones that have already been approved. This is not what's coming before you. So we have, we as a board, wow, we as a board have to think about this. I know it's not your decision, but you have to find a way to convince VDOT to do something about it. about it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Uh, next is Patrick Gallagher.
Patrick, Patrick Gallagher, Mineral District. Good evening, Chairman Adams and supervisors. Um, I'm one of the directors of the Foundation for Lake Anna Emergency Services. And from my perspective, I'd just like to share the developers of Lake Anna Resort, um, Mike Grossman, Mike Garcia, uh, have been good corporate neighbors to this, to us. Uh, they've been generously supporting our foundation's goals and fundraising for New Bridge Station 8. Um, we look forward to their continued support of our community. And if I heard correctly earlier, they've indicated they're gonna be, you know, continue to support our community, community, you know, specifically our foundation, but also others within Louisa County. And we appreciate that support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mrs. Hart. Yes, ma'am.
Vicki Hart, Louisa District, Town of Louisa. I hate to say this, but I kinda agree with Tony.
Tony may hate the fact that you say that.
Yeah, I know. That's why I said it. It was for him, not for the rest of you. My position is I know people in this county that have no place to live. They're staying in hotels with kids that other churches are providing for. They're staying at other people's homes. Why can't we walk the talk here instead of giving money to the housing foundation? Why can we not take these, if we approve these 40 unit, one bedrooms and make them affordable housing if they're going to be approved? And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would wish to speak to the board regarding this rezoning? All right. I give it back to you, Scott, cause I don't. You wanna bring the?
What do you want?
The, his presentation.
Oh, you want that back?
Please. Does anybody have any other questions?
The chair.
Yes, sir.
You closed the podium?
I did.
Did you?
I did.
Um, you know, uh, I voted for, for the project when it came through. Um, I understand the dynamics of economic development. I understand the dynamics, uh, of growth. I understand the dynamics of that piece of property. I really do. Um, you know, I got, I probably, I saw, um, Jack Snatter in his, one of the original Spring Creek guys. And I understand some of the products that they started with and they had to make it flexible for the market and make some changes to make it market. But I'm probably one of those guys that talk about affordable housing more than anybody. And I tell you, um, realistically about putting no affordable housing on the lake. Let's be realistic about that, okay? Anybody putting them on there?
No.
But in joining my partner, Mr. Williams, I am appalled at $500. I'm be honest with you. Um, cause I'm in support of this project, but to throw $500 as a proffer is beyond me. It really is. And I appreciate the work that people done, fire rescue, things of that nature. And I'm a big affordable housing, but to throw us $500 is like throwing us a, a, a cat a big bone. And so.
Like throw a cat a small bone.
Small bone.
Can I, can I, can I ask clarification? If I'm reading this correctly, Mr. Coon, I'll look at you because I read it again after Mr. Williams's comments. It's a total of a thousand dollars per unit over and above 96 to the Emergency Foundation and a total of a thousand dollars per unit over 96 to the Fluviana Louisa Housing.
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Yes.
I just, yeah, it's 500 at one point and then 500.
But like Tony said, it's 56,000 dollars.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I just wanna make sure.
And I'm not counting the developable money, okay?
That's your job.
But I can tell you, that kind of proffer, I'll be honest, coming back, that, that's very little. I'm just gonna call it what it is.
I agree.
Um, and I tell you, and you can quote me going forward, uh, in a rezoning residential, I'm asking for affordable housing, uh, contributions toward down paving assistance, rehabbing houses, um, and those are the things that I'm looking for. So, um, I'm gonna reserve my right to vote later on, but I do think that, uh, and I can't ask for a proffer because against the law.
Yes, please, ma'am.
But I just think that that's starting for, that's non-starter for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm actually, you know, I've been thinking about this and rolling this around and reading everything and, um, for the last few days and sitting here and listening to Mr. Williams, um, I, I agree. I absolutely agree the way it was presented to us. And I have to say, I do think these numbers in this proffer are a little bit low when it is pure profit that they are trying to make. Um, and everything that Mr., uh, y'all have to apologize. I am not feeling well tonight and my brain has stopped working. So names are not coming to me, but what Mr. Barnes just said, um, I, I, I agree with you on all points there and stand behind you on that. So I am a little bit appalled in the proffer here. I mean, it is nice to see a proffer with this in it, with some money towards affordable housing because we have a huge issue in our community. Um, but it is pretty low.
Anybody else?
Mr.?
Yes, sir.
Chairman, um, when I was on the planning commission, this came up and I voted against it. I think I was the only one that probably did. Um, I, I can't say that I necessarily, and I said at the time, that I didn't think there was anything wrong with the plans, that what they were looking to do. I didn't think there was so much ready for this yet. And I think we need to get and have time to get ready for it, uh, through improving the roads and that type of thing. Um, you know, the developer says it's gonna be probably a year and a half from now before they start. That gives us a chance to get a start on it. So, uh, you know, I, I, I'm torn tonight. Uh, the proffer, I think, is very weak. Um, and so I, I, I'm sitting here, not sure exactly what I'm gonna do.
Anybody else?
You ready for a motion?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So, so we're almost to the point that we're either gonna have a motion or we're not gonna have a motion.
We're at that point, sir.
Not necessarily.
We're there.
Mr. Grossman, um, I've only done this twice before. Mr. Barnes has done it once. My grandfather used to say free advice is worth what you pay for it. So I'm gonna give you some free advice. This is obviously a, uh, development that's in the mineral district. It was a controversial vote 18 months ago. Um, obviously, there's some controversy that you've heard here tonight. If we vote on something and it doesn't pass on a rezoning, I'm looking to make sure I say this right, it can't come back for a year.
That's right.
So that's the free advice I'm about to give you. It might, I, the, the concern I have, I understand what Mr. Williams said, I, you know, what you said, what we have designed right now, we can't sell them so it doesn't make financial sense, basically. Um, and I understand, especially on a five, I don't know who would buy a five bedroom condominium, but, um, um, but it doesn't seem like there's a market for that. I voted for this in the past, supported it, thought it was the best plan for that piece of property. Because what you could have done by right, what you can still do by right, I don't think is a, is good for that property at all. And it's even worse for the, for the, for the bridge and for the road. But I have the same, one of the same concerns Mr. Williams has. I, I did the math, so I was glad to know that I did the math correctly. From the 96 approved units to 124 is a 30% increase in the number of units. Um, that's just a lot. I mean, that's just a lot. I understand it doesn't change size of the building. It's still a huge difference in the number of units. My suggestion, and this will be your determination, because I'm gonna ask you to come back to the mic and then you're gonna tell us what to do, uh, in this regard.
He's gonna ask us what to do, sir.
You can ask us to defer a vote tonight and work with staff. I'm happy to work with you to see if there's something that would be more palatable to the board and to the neighborhood. Or you can ask us to take a vote tonight and we'll see where that vote would go. But I can tell you that I have, as an original supporter of this, um, and still have people who are mad at me for that vote, but I still think that was the right vote that night. I can't support a 30% increase in the number of units. So, um, at this point, I need a little bit of direction from you. Would you like the board to defer any action on this until future meeting? Or would you like for us to take a vote this evening?
Thank you, Chair Adams. Could, could we have a conversation about possibly reducing the number of units in the request to something lower than 28 units? Is that, is that a possibility? I, I will say that I did, I did hear a cor, a comment, um, that this is, this is pure profit. Um, it, it, it is not. It's, 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 it's the same amount of square footage. It's just reconfiguring that square footage. The unit is exactly the same, the building is exactly the same size. It's just reconfiguring what, what we already have in, in the building. That's all it is. It's not pure profit. It's just reconfiguring so we can make it a better, uh, a better product for the market to absorb. That's exactly what it is.
To answer your question, we certainly can have a conversation about reducing the unit size, maybe a conversation about your voluntary proffers because we cannot ask you a proffer. Uh, the board has made it a point, and I know we can't see Mr. McCotter, but Mr. McCotter and I have had several conversations about this, um, to try to limit this negotiation back and forth at the podium. Uh, so if you, if what you're asking me is for a deferral of this vote so that you can have continued conversations with staff about a different number than 124 and possibly anything that you wanna proffer, we're more, I would grant that request if that's what your request is.
That is what I'm requesting.
All right. So without objection, uh, we've closed the public hearing, but we will defer a vote on this motion.
No, I don't think we will, sir. We might, we might make a motion to defer a vote and then we might vote on it, but no, we won't just categorically defer.
Yes, sir.
I move to defer action on this to a le, to a later date.
All right.
I'll second that.
Yeah, I'm not. We'll support that. We're gonna vote on it tonight. It's just a game.
All right. So the motion is to defer, uh, this vote to a later date, let the applicant come back and, um, confer with staff on some changes in their proposal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes six to one.
No, it's five, two. Do, McCotter, Mr. McCotter, refer it or against it?
Yeah.
He said aye.
I am for the motion for defer.
Six point. You're right.
All right. So we'll have you work with staff and we'll bring us back at a later time.
Thank you very much.
Next, um, is a resolution to approve a rezoning application, Resolution 2024-07 LA Resort. No, I'm sorry. That's what we just did. Um, RP 20 Cut Along Consolidated Abandonment of Dedicated Right-of-Way for Public Use. Is this the order we wanna do these in, Mrs. Buckner?
Yes. That's the correct order.
Okay. All right. Yes, ma'am.
Um, this public hearing is a request for vacation and abandonment of existing recorded right-of-way from RP 20 Cut Along Consolidated LLC. Um, at the November 14th, 2024 meeting, the planning commission confirmed conformance of the project with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan Regarding Road Improvements and approved a private road waiver request from the applicant to facilitate development objectives to allow the development to proceed with private roads rather than roads that will be come state and maintained. The request this evening is pursuant to Section 33.2-915 of the Code of Virginia for the abandonment of right-of-way dedicated to the county for public use on recorded subdivision plaits, including the right-of-way known as Cut Along Drive, Tatum Drive and Emily's Way. Per the state code, when the road is deemed by the governing body to be no longer necessary for public use, it may be vacated by the governing body. And with the approval of the private road waiver by the planning commission, it is no longer necessary for the right-of-way to be held by Louisa County. This request does not include any right-of-way shown on those recorded subdivision plaits and dedicated to the Commonwealth of Virginia along Route 208 New Bridge Road and Route 652 Kentucky Spring Roads and applies to the internal subdivision road network only. The vacation and abandonment of the rights-of-way designated for public use will align with the shift to privately owned and maintain roads within, in the development and will permit private maintenance of the roads by the association. And the developers provided draft documents that will be recorded, um, which will provide for the future maintenance of that internal road network. And those draft documents are included in your packet.
I'm sorry, Ms. Buckler. I was distracted there for a moment. Did you say that this would start at the state highways on Kentucky Springs and 208, including the entrances, and everything would be private?
Everything internal will be private. It does not affect any right-of-way that was shown on the plaits that have been recorded so far.
So, so, so the dedicated right-of-way and the turn lanes would still be there?
Exactly.
But they, and they will also be privately maintained?
The, anything with, that was dedicated to the Commonwealth of Virginia or VDOT along 208.
From, from the dedication line in.
Right.
So if there's a 50-foot dedication or whatever it is, from the dedication line in will be, um, private.
Correct.
And from, and from there out will still be maintained by VDOT.
Correct.
Built by them, maintained by VDOT.
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions from Ms. Buckner? Thank you, ma'am.
I got a comment. Thank you. This is the way development should be done. It's a series of, of glorified driveways is all a subdivision road is, and the Commonwealth should not be burdened with the maintenance of it. So I'm gonna start off with a thank you for this one.
Well, I saw them catch their breath when you said you had a comment.
I did too. I was looking at their faces.
Lord asking it over here by the base chairman. All right.
I'm on the roll tonight.
Mr. Walsh.
How do I move? Am I, just adjusted this way?
Right side, Eric.
Good, good afternoon or good evening, Mr. Chairman and supervisors. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Joe Walsh. I'm the project director for Cut Along and I'm a resident of Spotsylvania County. Um, there's two items on the agenda and I thought first, um, as this project's been on the books for quite some time and entitled since 2005, I would, uh, offer a quick update on the project and then address the right-of-way and then the second item. Um, this is our land development team. Uh, Mr. Payne is our land use counsel. Uh, Mitch Bowser is our principal engineer. Um, Mr. Bowser's company, VHB, we're very lucky because they were the original environmental engineer on the project. They're our civil engineer, uh, they're our landscape architect and, and they've, uh, had, had the history of the project. Nathan Kaiser is our environmental, environmental compliance manager and project director. Nathan's been here since Reef has been here. Uh, I'm the project director. Uh, here's the history. 2005 is when the master plan was approved. Our company is Reef Capital Partners. Uh, we are out of Lehigh, Utah. Uh, the company was a lender and then acquired the property in 2018. A lot of time and money went into building the property in 2018. A lot of time and money went into building the golf course, which was completed in 2021. As you probably know, all the utilities at Cut Along are privately maintained and developed by Reef. Nathan has been working diligently on that. We're happy to say here in 2024, we've completed the wastewater plant. We've completed the water. And then we had a great event this summer. It's the first project that we have. The Cut Along Golf Team has been operating out of a temporary area. We're happy to have the clubhouse under construction, and then that will be that should open up that will open up this summer. A little bit about us. We are a developer. We're also a resort operator. The company has three key projects. The first one is Black Desert. Black Desert is a vacation destination in southern Utah for folks that live in the Salt Lake City and Utah area. Marsala is a project at the New Deer Valley Expansion. And then our project, Cut Along, we will be branding the resort as Tributor Resort. Cut Along will always be the name of the golf course, and a tributor is a miner that gets a part of the take of what they find, historic term. More to come on that. The other projects, Cormont at Deer Valley, Main and Skies in Salt Lake City, and then I'm sorry, is in Park City, and then Cocoa Palm. Cocoa Palm is a resort, if you're a Elvis Presley fan. It's where Blue Hawaii was filmed. The project has been in a dilapidated state for years. Reef is rebuilding the project. We were very fortunate to have Mrs. Yonkin come to our groundbreaking. In the groundbreaking, you can see the original rendering of our clubhouse. Happy to say our contractors right on schedule. Mrs. Yonkin basically has photos of the partners. The Reef is a privately held company, and the partners have been very active and are very bullish on Louisa County, and very happy about the investment that they've made here. As an operator and a developer, we have a strong commitment to the county. I'm new. The company has been here for four years. We've embraced the the Lake Anna EMS. The Gallaghers and us were working on the future programs. We're benefit. We have the benefit of a golf course to provide to help raise funds. We are the home course for the Louisa County High School Golf Team, and then we're also continue to work with LACA to raise funds to improve the quality of water in Lake Anna. Sports tourism is a big agenda item for Louisa County and Mr. Kuhn. We've worked diligently to have prior projects, but now that we have the clubhouse and we'll have units to stay in, we'll have some good synergies to work with Ms. King and Mr. Kuhn to drive sports tourism. And then we have the goal is to hold the state high school golf championship, and then also really to work on grants. So there are grants through the Virginia Tourism Corporation that will work cooperatively with Louisa County. And then as far as the right-of-way abandonment, I'll call up Mr. Payne.
Thank you, Joe. Mr. Chairman, other members of the Board of Supervisors, my name is Charlie Payne. I represent the applicant. Happy New Year to you. It's always a pleasure being in Louisa County. Thank you for your hospitality. I'm not sure I can add a whole lot more than what Joe has already presented and what staff has already presented. This right-of-way request aligns with the Planning Commission's determination that the waiver request was consistent with the Comprehensive Plan, is also consistent with your zoning ordinance in regards to requests for a waiver for private roads. So that's what our request is today. And as Mr. Williams noted, this is not any publicly dedicated VDOT roadway, if you will. This is self-contained within the development, and basically will be primarily used by the residents and also by the guests who come to Cut Along. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Appreciate your time this evening.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Payne? Anybody have any questions for the applicant?
I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
A very petty question. Will you get pickleball there?
Pickleball. You'll see that in presentation in regards to the to the modification to the master plan. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So I'm going to open the public hearing. So this public hearing is specific to the abandonment of the road system from the state system into a public road system, excuse me, a private road system, not about the master plan change. So this public hearing, so I have Mr. Gallagher. I think you actually probably want to speak about the second public hearing. Jack Snyder, I don't see where's Jack there. Okay, couldn't see. I think you're probably wanting to speak about the second. Okay. So that's all of these. Mrs. Hart, do you want to speak?
Thank you.
Hand is not up. All right. So I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, move it. Approve it.
Second. I'm promptly moved and seconded that we approve this proposed amendment, ORD 2024-13. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now we're on to the last public hearing, which is a resolution to approve zoning application, REZ 2024-06, RP 20 Cut Along Consolidated LLC applicant, which is a review of a proffer and master plan amendment. Mrs. Buckler.
Yes, sir, Chairman Adams. Again, this request is for a proffer and master plan amendment to the original master plan that was approved in 2005 with REZ 06 2005. There have been several minor amendments that were done administratively to the plan over the last 18, 19 years. But this will the proposal is to increase the number of estate lots, condos, villas, and townhomes, while reducing the number of executive and cluster lots, but maintaining the total of 891 units. That was approved with the original master plan. It also includes a change in the road network from the publicly dedicated roads to the private privately maintained road network. A summary of the proposed changes is listed in your board packet on page 290. And again, the applicant is here to answer and provide additional information on the proposed amendment, and staff is also available to answer any questions.
Mr. Williams. Thank you. Ms. Buckler, I just want a couple of clarifications, because I'm not the smartest person up here. So they're going to take the number of single-family homes, detached single-family homes, and decrease that, and increase the number of townhouses? Is that right?
The number of townhomes will be increased, yes, sir.
But the number of units will be the same. We're not taking a five-bedroom home and making five one-bedroom townhouses, are we?
No, sir.
Okay. I just want to be clear.
Yes.
And then I guess the we approved the roads, but now we need to approve it as an amendment to the master plan. Is that why that's included in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there anything else in this other than those two items?
The applicant will be able to explain. They've done some rearranging of from the original master plan of the location of the designated units.
So so short of short of short of sticking it someplace else on the property.
Right.
There's no other changes?
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other questions from Mrs. Buckler? All right. Thank you, Mrs. Buckler. So we'll open the public.
They want to speak.
No, the applicant does want to come back. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have pickleball.
You don't.
So what are we doing? So the the master plan was completed by Mr. Mendelson in 2005 as a golf community, as a residential golf community. It's a fine master plan for that. What we would like to do is focus on having the project be a destination resort, where we have a larger mix of rental units that we have in designated areas and control, and a more robust amenities for off-lake activities. You can see some of the activities. Our goal is to have the a more robust program, so that when our guests are there, obviously Lake Anna and Louisa County are why they're coming here, but we want to have reasons for them to stay, get out of their car. Oh, I lost a slide. Well, anyway, I'll I'll ad lib. So what we've done is created a network of trails, and the trails basically will connect all the different communities. We've also put a lot of nice pocket parks. So the pocket parks will give open space and green belts, and then the goal is, with the roads being private, that anyone could get on a bike, get on their car, or drive on a golf cart, and go from the from their home to the different activity centers. Feedback from the community. We've worked closely with LACA. We've spoken with our neighboring HOAs and other community for input. The first one is LACA had asked us to ensure with our nutrient credits for our wastewater plant to do them on site. So actually, it was a it was a great idea. We were able to do it efficiently. So all of the nutrient credits for this project benefit Lake Anna. It did have us take an area south.
So you developed some wetlands, preserved it, and made a nutrient bank on site?
Yes, sir. And we put about.
And took the credit yourself and applied them to what you were doing to offset the wetlands you had to mitigate.
We're not interrupting wetlands. We were improving them. But yes, we're doing all the nutrient credits on site.
Good.
And a big part of them are 75 acres of conservation area, and it's the area south of Contrary Creek. We also did a tour with the LACA group to look at the Altria Wetlands Facility, where they had come up with a quite extensive wetlands facility to basically help cleanse the industrial waste that comes from that project. And we've added wetlands to the site. It's worked out quite nicely, because we can put our trails and our bridges around that area. Feedback from the community. Biggest concern is from LACA and the community is boat traffic on Lake Anna. As you see our little tributary there, Contrary Creek actually extends through that whole area into Lake Anna. We don't have the world's best lakefront area. It's a little more limited. So the concern was 891 units, you know, 891 boats would be problematic. We basically have made sure and agreed with LACA that we wouldn't have a boat ramp on site. So basically, our our members would be using a remote boat ramp or renting from us that is there at the facility. We also aren't putting a petrol station there. And then the other concern was making sure that there's no public access via boat to the restaurants, and we've agreed to do that. Mitigating other neighborhood impacts, we basically, as I said, removed the density south of Contrary Creek. So that's part of the shift. That was all single-family residential. We did isolate the pickleball courts to the spot that they belong. So if you have seen pickleball throughout America, it it generates a noise that's really fun when you play, but if you live near it, it's not fun. So we were able to put it in a location by extending this phase that is closer to the golf course. It might disrupt golfers, but it's away from our neighbors and away from our residential place. We have a proffer for dark sky ordinance. We're big advocates of dark sky ordinance. So of course, we'll meet that. And then this master plan is, Ms. Buckler had said previously, there had been adjustments to the master plan. The waste facility was right next to the neighbors. It was put in the proper And then as my last slide before I show the updated master plan, we've basically come up with two nodes. So again, we have 891 entitlements. We're not asking to increase it. We're just moving the inventory around. In the center area is the clubhouse. In that clubhouse golf area, we're adding townhomes to that area. And then near the lake, we have a more robust program, and in that area, we'll have more off-water activities. And you can see the maintenance and utility infrastructure. We've moved that from where it was to Kentucky or to New Bridge Road. So that'll be have less large trucks coming through the resort to make it safer for our guests. And then there is no change to the commercial activity area. It's the food line and that. There's no change to that. And then I'll have Mr. Payne address the master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, other members of the board. My name is Charlie Payne. I represent the applicant. Joe is doing a wonderful job. Not sure why he's asking council to come up here. But I just would just add that in you in your packet, as staff noted, the various different changes of the uses that Joe was talking about, the cap stays the same, 891 units. It doesn't change at all. Changing this mix, in our opinion, gives us an opportunity to have a more viable project, which will enhance the ability for a destination location, which enhances tourism, which inevitably hopefully enhances positive tax revenues for the county as well. But the mix, in addition to moving many of the pieces to get around, as Joe had explained, it comes out to 147 estate units, 34 executive, 198 cluster, and then 312 condo villa units and 200 towns, in addition to the spa and the clubhouse and the lake amenities that and pedestrian trails that Joe had noted. The other important piece of this is obviously the private roads that we had noted earlier. The Planning Commission had addressed back in November, and of course, the vacation of the right-of-way was all part of that process, too. So the roads are all self-contained within the development, as Mr. Williams noted earlier, primarily used by the residents and the guests to the site, and they'll be maintained by the HOA and by the developer. So taxpayers won't be paying for those improvements or the maintenance or repairs for those roads. So other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and appreciate your time this evening.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Walsh. The striped at the bottom is restaurants and retail sales. Is that going to be private as well, limited to just the guests, or will the restaurants be open to the public?
Our goal is to have a private community, but we'll have rental units. So anyone that's renting a unit is the general public is welcome.
So so the the boat traffic coming to the restaurants, really not a big deal, because if you're not staying on site, you you're not allowed to come use the restaurants and facilities. And I'm assuming the reason we're making the roads private, which is perfectly fine, is because we're going to have a gated community?
Yes, sir.
So entrance won't be just coming and going. You'll have to have a rental or be a member of the golf club or something to get in. Now, is that accurate?
Yes, it'll be, you know, professional. There will be a greeters hut, possibly a transponder on one side, and then everyone coming would be greeted. If there are guests coming to stay at the hotel, they're directed where to go. If they're a resident or a member, they can just bypass with a transponder.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes. Mr. McCotter.
Yeah, I'd like to ask Mr. Walsh a question. Do we have any rendition, our rendition of the striped area, as Supervisor Williams noted? Is can we see that, or can Mr. Walsh describe what that will be looking like, specifically dimensions and the mixture of what would be going on there? I noticed condos will be going there as well.
Sure, Mr. McCotter. We're currently a conceptual plan. We've had a couple of different versions, but our goal is to have some golf activity, townhomes that are on the third hole, and then condominium villas that are affronting the middle of the project with a spa that will be adjacent to Contrary Creek. And then between the the lake and the condominium villas would be, oh, it's about a about a football field and a half of pretty much activity area, where you'd have pool, maybe a pool bar, volleyball, sand, and items like that. Did I answer your question, sir?
No, but that's okay.
Well enough. Do we know how many stories those buildings will be? Are those just like one-story type of buildings?
It'll be a mixture. Where our concept right now, Mr. McCotter, is it's a mixture of one, one-story, two-story, three-story, and four-story. I think the code recalls for 60 feet, so it can't be greater than 60. We have no intention of asking for variances for setbacks or variance for building height. And then, of course, we've engaged a very talented architect, so we wanted to look architecturally pleasing in the building. Massing in the way we do it will be quite nice and fitting to the environment.
I don't want to speak for Supervisor Williams, but I'm probably sure that he's happy that you're not going to be coming back asking for any variances. Thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? All right. We'll open. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We'll open the public hearing. The I do have two letters that came in. One is from Mike and Valerie Bagby from the Mineral District, which basically opposes, which will be entered into the record. One is from Terry Wood, Vice President, Lake Anna Division of Northern Virginia, Tadon Escrow, which is in favor, from a which will be entered into the record. I do have a card for Jack
Good evening. Fitz?
Hey, Jack.
Here we are again.
[laughing]
I've had a long run with Louisa County back back in 1985.
Mr. Snyder. Mr. Snyder, just introduce yourself and your county.
I'm Jack Snyder, Mineral District, 423 Laurelwood Drive, Shorewood. Okay. Live with my daughter. Yeah, Pierce Stone happens to be a golfer, right? So when I'm the golf professional at Lake Monticello, Pierce and I played golf together, and next thing you know, he's my banker. So he funded me while I was the golf professional at Lake Monticello. Come to 2006, and Fitz and I run into each other at Spring Creek. And then here I am again, getting along in the tooth, but see a lot of, lot of promise in this property, and I don't want to hang up my hat. So the changes they're going to make, the maintenance facility being moved is absolutely really going to help the whole property as far as traffic flow and so forth. The event space that will be completed when we get the clubhouse and so forth will be an amazing thing for the weddings and whatever events that tend to want to come our way, and maybe some of the bigger events that we hope to host down the road. And, and then our stay-and-play units are, I won't say critical, but it's really going to be a big, big boost for what we can attract at, at Cut Along. And then, and then benefit the entire community. So I don't know, I just, I'm, I'm here as a director of golf, I love what I do, I see that this is absolutely the, I don't know, I wish I was younger. This is an amazing property. While you probably may choose to live there or not, you can always staycation there, and it will be the time of your life. It's Disney World, I believe. So looking forward to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, again, and supervisors. I'm still Pat Gallagher.
Still Pat Gallagher.
Still one of the directors of the Foundation for Lake Anna Emergency Services. I don't know, I just reached middle age, Jack, it's pretty good, so hang in there. I just wanted to speak to the impact that Cut Along at Lake Anna has had on the foundation and, you know, from our perspective, how they positively impacted our community. They hosted two fundraising golf tournaments, you saw one, a picture of a slide there for the benefit of New Bridge Station 8. And my wife Jane, sitting back there, is well into the planning of a third tournament, which is coming up this year on May 20th. This collaboration with Cut Along has resulted in raising $20,000 in 2023, $28,000 last year, and, you know, of course, that accelerated our ability as a foundation to provide matching funds to the county for the purchase of a new ambulance in 2023 and for a fire and rescue boat in '24. Last year, our foundation nominated Cut Along for the Louisa County Impact Awards, hosted by the Louisa Ford Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce. The awards recognized key supporters who made significant contributions to advancing nonprofit missions through financial support, volunteerism, or strategic partnership. We're delighted to continue our partnership with Cut Along, and just wanted to ensure that you all knew what generous neighbors they've been and their positive impact on both our organization and the local community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. So I do not have any more cards. Is there anyone that would wish to address the board during this public?
Good evening. I am Mike Sharp, Mineral District, full-time resident at Freshwater Estates, also a member of Cut Along, I think member number 26. So obviously, I am very invested and care deeply about both communities, their well-being, and the development itself. I think I should first say, say, we would not be here, my wife and I, this would not be our retirement home if it were not for Cut Along and for Reef's commitment to coming in and finishing Mr. Clark's golf course and that golf course community. I think what it brings to this Lake, Lake Anna community as a whole is tremendous and something we never have had here before. With respect to the amendments to the master plan, I would hope the board would seriously consider approving those tonight. I do appreciate the concerns raised by some of my friends and neighbors, concerns about boat traffic and activity across the creek, especially from freshwater. But from my perspective, these changes do not have a negative impact on our community, the Lake Anna community, or just the overall rural nature that we love so much about this area. I think the changes, the shift to more stay-in-place fits within the business model that Reef is doing. I think it takes less stress off of the roads, the schools, and boat traffic in particular on Contrary Creek. And I think most importantly, it addresses many of the issues that have been raised by LACA and by the community over the last few years. Just real quick, with respect to Reef Capital, I've got to know these folks very well over the last four or five years. I've been to Utah, I've seen what they've done at Reef out there at Black Desert, the recognition they've received for all of their environmental efforts, and I think they've brought that same approach to Lake Anna. I've gotten to know Nate, Joe as well. I've seen all the hard work they've done to try to perhaps fix some of the sins of past developers, working with the county, working with the state and regulatory agencies. I've seen how they've worked with our community with the dredging plan. So for everything they have done and for this area, I seriously would like to echo what I think LACA has already said. I believe these are good stewards for the community and for the development around this lake. So I hope you will consider approving this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Evening, Mr. Chairman and the rest of the board. We, LACA had not planned to make a statement tonight. I'm John Wayne, I'm from the Mineral District.
Thank you, sir.
I normally speak to you representing LACA, and LACA had not planned to make a statement tonight for or against this, which is normally our stand, anyway. But I just wanted to speak for a minute about the group of people who have submitted this plan to you, because in all the dealings, and you know I have lots of dealings with developers in this county and Spotsamani County, and a little bit in Orange, I've never worked with people like this before. They want to know what's on our mind, they want to know what our constituents think, what our members think. And, you know, they, they get in your truck and they ride down to Chesterfield and they take a look at a wetlands project, you know, with you, so that, you know, they understand what you're talking about with regard to the concerns that you have. You know, this second wastewater treatment plan of theirs is going to put affluent in Blackwater Creek, and we will, we, we asked them if they would consider putting that in a wetland instead of right in the creek, so it would have a chance to percolate, and some of the phosphorus and nitrogen would get out of it before it met, met the creek. And they've done that. So, you know, just about everything that, that we've asked them to do, they've tried to find a way to do it. And so, you know, I'm only going to take three minutes here, because I'm speaking for me personally, I, I would support this, I support this personally, and I, I think you guys should support this move. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. I don't have any other cards. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board? All right, seeing that, I'll close, public comment, bring this back to the board. I do have a comment, but does anybody else have a comment?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've been fortunate enough to go down and play golf at Cut Along, and I'm a member of Spring Creek, so, you know, that's kind of where my bar is set. But I can tell you, it, it, it is an amazing golf course. And for it to be in Louisa County is just beyond my 70 years living here, I just could have never imagined. And that y'all are now going to make it a destination, it's unbelievable. As somebody who travels with the group every year to play golf in destination, that that's going to be available, I mean, it's, thank y'all for being so professional and being in Louisa County.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, I'm not a golfer. I don't think I've ever held a golf club. I'm an equestrian, I'm on a horse every weekend, you too. Give me a horse, I'll be fine. I have to say, what I was really impressed with tonight, I've heard some fabulous comments, but the fact that you support our youth in our county, that you support our high school golf team, that you want to host the championships for the state, for, I, I just think that's phenomenal, and that gives back to our community and that raises our youth up, and that's what I really have a passion about. So I really thank you for that. That impressed upon me a lot.
Any additional comments? I have two. One, I do want to thank Mr. Walsh, Mr. Payne, for your, your work, not just with county staff, but with me as the district supervisor. The, the investment that you've made in our community, not just financially, which is is large, but with our residents, with our citizens, with our Foundation for Emergency Services, have proven you to be a great corporate partner. I think this change is a beneficial change to, to your resort. I unfortunately have had a golf club in my hand, and I should stick to riding horses, but it is a, it is a premier development in Louisa County, and Reef has invested millions and millions and millions of dollars there and elsewhere in the county. And so we're appreciative of that, we're appreciative of the, of the professionalism. I'm supportive, I'm going to let Mr. Williams make the motion in a minute, because as chair, I don't make a motion. I am supportive of this change. In full transparency, I would point out that part of the investment that you've made in this county is Reef has bought the complex at the Boardwalk. I own a business at the Boardwalk, and our only business relationship is I pay you rent every month, but you are my landlord, Reef is my landlord. So in full transparency, I will disclose that, but that will not prevent me from voting on this tonight. Mr. Wayne?
Mr. Chairman, a move or approve the amendment to the master plan as submitted?
Second. Been properly moved and seconded that we approve rezoning application, REZ 2024-06. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Mr. Barnes?
So moved, second.
Been properly moved and seconded that we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, meeting's adjourned.